My pleasure to call this meeting to order. School Administration, June 64, Board's Meeting, Wednesday, July 29, 2015. Um, Brad, did you do us the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any public comments from our public? That being said, shall we continue to read the minutes from the last meeting, July 29, 2015. It's been none but in the public session first.
I think I motion for a second.
Two seconds.
One.
One second.
Good. Excuse me, could I have a second, New York, because I didn't hear a package. Sure. I'm sorry. Actually, this is the meeting, and I wasn't present at it.
That's correct.
Sorry, Dad.
So you made a statement.
Yes, I must.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess it's up. Do you have any objections? I guess so. All non-public.
Non-public. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone in the state?
I would not stand. Yes, I'm sorry.
Five seconds.
How long are we going to do the financial report?
Mr. Chair, answer any questions that the board may have. That's my vote.
Anybody have any questions on the financial report?
The phone maintenance is already... You already spent $5,000 for the first three months. Does that sound right? On the second page, sorry. Third line down.
Would you ask him, sorry, if he could?
I was thinking the phone maintenance line, and of course, we're only into the third half, and we already spent $5,200. Well, we'd only get $960 in current, but we've spent $4,200 already on that. Does that sound right? I didn't do my homework on it, but...
Yeah, I can look into that. It looks like they might have... Doesn't that indicate it's over the norm by $1,961 or anything like that?
Yes.
They haven't covered the total amount, but they might have, you know, missing put on a number somewhere else in the budget, so I'll look into that for you.
Maybe we'll... You want to take them all, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, just go right through them. It's expensive for it. You have a revenue summary report. Any questions you may have on that?
I have a question. On the summary, revenue summary report, we're in the parentheses, does that cost us money to operate in an overnorm status?
That we're waiting on those, like, take, for example, the appropriation for Milton Wakefield. We're waiting on those appropriations, so it's not something that, when it comes to the revenue, you'll show it's in the deficit, because we haven't gotten revenues in yet.
So it doesn't, or does it not cost us money to operate that way, how their fees and costs to...
Not necessarily. There aren't fees associated. Take, for example, for IDAs, our grant monies, we front those monies out of our operating budget, and then we get reported, and we get those monies back as revenue, and that would adjust those lines when that happens.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah. You front the revenue for the IDA grant, what happens if we don't get the full amount of the provision?
We do, we will get the full amount, because we have to apply for what has been allocated to us, and our expenses have to fall within that, so we don't front the revenue, we front the expense, and then we regain the revenue.
But what was the grant that was, just recently, I recall, they said they weren't going to get the IDA grant?
That was Title I in Wakefield.
So if they can do it with that grant, why couldn't they do it with any other grant? So therefore, it's proven for us to be fronting money for a federal grant upfront.
It's, these monies have been guaranteed to us, and we're within our expenditures based on the revenue that's been guaranteed to us. Every year, we get our allotment for each grant, and then we have to apply for that specific allotment, and knowing that that's what we're going to get, they can't cut our federal entitlements midstream, so we know what we're getting upfront, therefore, we base our expenditures on what those revenues are going to be for the grant.
But they didn't cut the Title I?
They did, but it wasn't midstream. They let us know prior to the start of any expenditures out of that grant. Next is the cash reconciliation, as well as the treasury report. Mr. Chair, just the approval of the treasury report.
Um, end of question.
I do, I do. On the current page of the treasury report there, it says bank TDB Bank, a negative $823.79. Do you know what that is?
I do not.
I see it on the bank statement, and under other withdrawals, I haven't spent a lot of time looking at this, but I don't see it. I'm reading forward, so we could check into that as well.
Any other questions? Approval of the treasury report? I'll make a motion. All in motion. Second?
A second.
In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Apologies?
I'm here today, and I'm sorry, it's maybe still studying. I guess it's unanimous.
Going for again the new business, Mr. Superintendent, take a little stale of your vehicle?
Yeah, I requested this to be put on the agenda. We raised the topic, I believe, last year at some point or so, in the SAU vehicle in Olive, and with a pending withdrawal, I wanted to put it back on there and see what the board wanted to do, because if you want to sell the vehicle, where are you wait unless you get it for? So it's a, just wanted to put it back on there and see if the board would like to do that.
Wouldn't that be up to the voters to legislate your body if those appropriation and expenditure based on legislative body action? Why wouldn't the voters have a say on that?
To sell the vehicle?
Yeah, but whether or how are we even going to have that vehicle available? I mean, if the legislative body has already approved the funds in the past for that purpose, that specific purpose, and I don't know if the elected officials have the power to override the legislative body's direction to the SAU, or the joint board SAU. If the voters have said, we want to use the staff car to save taxpayers' money, I think it's an issue for the voters to decide. I don't think it's an issue for us to decide.
I think it's absolutely an issue for us to decide. We do the same things with buses. We don't go to, we don't have the taxpayers vote to sell a bus that they've acquired. This is something that the taxpayers give us permission to choose to sell when it's time, and they also give us permission to write the policy that goes along with it.
Mr. Brown?
Um, I believe we already had this discussion before, and it's, I thought there was an agreement that it was best to keep the car to keep the payment of mileage down. I think you're gonna, any savings, if you will, if you sold the car today versus a year and a half from now are going to be far offset by the mileage that we were now, now we would have to pay without the vehicle.
Mr. Brown? If I was on his line of thought, it'd be almost as if the SAU Joint Board has the ability to decide, oh, we're not going to use buses anymore, we're going to just decide to sell all the buses, because we have the authority to vote that way. The people of the legislative body have proposed a certain direction for this Joint Board to act, and until they decide to go in a different direction, I believe it's our duty to go in the direction that's been voted upon.
Mrs. Walsh?
Thank you. That was not a special one article as far as I remember. It was just part of our operating budget. So we include things like copying machines in our regular operating budget, and we don't, when it's time to sell a copy machine, or do this, or do that, we don't go and ask the voters on every specific thing. That's why they elected us.
I have to disagree with that, because the monies are raised and appropriated to replace that copying machine through the vote. When the voters approve or disapprove of a budget, they are voting on those line items, and it is our duty to go by what the voters say. So if we're, if we sell a copying machine, pretty sure we're going to replace it with something. The voters have approved the budget that's going to cover the cost of that brand copying machine. That's, that's the reality.
How old is the bid?
2006.
2006, and it's probably just about ready for a lot of maintenance, then.
Doesn't get a lot of travel time?
But that's even worse.
I remember Mr. Brown was saying last year or two about that, to try to save mileage used on that. Is there a pressing need to sell a vehicle now? Nope. We could get a better deal tomorrow or week. There isn't a pressing need. I'm really the only one that drives.
If we sell it now?
So there isn't any, really anyone else that's driving it, or that's putting it for mileage for the regular routine business around the district, so...
Because that's one of the elements that's in the SAU assets, take the wealth, right? I mean, if we're sold, it's what they'll see, or what the dealers are, and we'll go back to the taxpayers or whatever they do, so I don't know.
We haven't heard from this young lady over here.
Mr. Chair, see, I think not using the car, you're not putting it for mileage, is that what you're telling us?
Correct.
And you don't put it for mileage?
Only if I have long, long travels. I've only put it in once.
Can we get those records for the first year on mileage for the car? Or, you know, Brian probably hasn't, nobody's used it for mileage. You know that, okay? Nobody's putting it for mileage checks.
Not that I know of. Makes sense taking out of the operating budget, other than our, out of district coordinator.
I approve mileage for me, and I don't want this, I don't want this. Mr. Fox?
Part of the reason why people have to charge it for mileage is because the way the policy's set up, if the staff car is available, they have to use that and not charge mileage. If you eliminate the staff car, you eliminate the voter's choice on whether or not they're paying mileage for staff members to go around the state. So the staff car is there for a purpose. Again, you can vote against what the people have asked us to do through the vote, but I'm not going to put by on that.
Okay.
I didn't put this agenda item on there, cause a problem. We just keep the car, bring it up if we have to at some point.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of selling the vehicle?
No, we, I don't think anybody would. You know, we made a motion.
Table, yeah, right. Table, what's your table?
Bring it up before you ask them, here.
Do we have to vote on table, you know?
No.
Okay.
And so, we did, we went up for a bid for the web designer, and you see in your packet that you have summary sheet was put together. We did get four bids. Echoc came in at $13,471. Edlio came in at $4,200. Virtual towns and schools came in at $10,000, with a $2,750 amount would be an annual cost, and school messenger came in $5,600. Also, look and see, we provided you a checklist as to implement requirements in the bid, and you can see that school messenger met all of the requirements, and coming to you with a recommendation of school messenger. Looked at the bid specifically, no response. It was impressive, paid early, in the state of Hampshire, they do the website design for the Conton School District and the Dover School District, and the $5,600 is a good amount, it was budgeted for the service. So my recommendation is to go with school messenger.
Mr. Brown?
Um, I believe with the impending withdrawal, this is a total waste of taxpayer money, irregardless of whether it was appropriated of the budget or not. Like I said, with the impending withdrawal, I mean, you're looking at, what, maybe a year and a half of this? I think it's a total waste of taxpayer money.
Yes?
I'm going to speak to that and just say that I believe that for the next year and a half, we need to have a user-friendly site where everything is there, everything is easy access. We can't have our parents or the other taxpayers in town struggling to find information that should be cleared out easier, and I think that it's definitely not a waste of money, that the website needs to be up and running for the next year and a half, and it needs to be successfully and user-friendly, so that we don't keep having comments coming back that they don't find the minutes, they don't, they can't find the policy, they can't find this. We need to make it more user-friendly, and I support the use of your decision.
Anyone else? No. Problem?
How long has this website been up and running?
The current design?
Yep.
I'm not sure.
So it has been up and running, so it's not correct that the statement was to have a website that's up and running, because we already have a website that's up and running. Is it going to look pretty if we redo it at a cost of $5,600 to taxpayers? It's totally not worth it. They've been, the taxpayers have been using this website, no one even knows how long. So for another year and a half, they can get through that troublesome mess, so it was just stated, but they can deal with it for another year. I'm sure the taxpayers would rather have $5,600 than, and deal with the same website that they've been dealing with for no one even knows how long it's been so long.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
The taxpayer, and I have a very difficult time with that website. I've gone, sometimes you can pull up policies, most times you can't pull up policies. It needs to be repaired.
Mr. Steer?
Matter of fact, we had someone at our last meeting asking when are we going to update the SAU website, because it's horrible. It's already appropriated, and it's for a year and a half. If it was another month, maybe, but it's going to be another year and a half.
Anyone else? Yes?
I do believe that at our last SAU meeting, we had a whole discussion on this, and the majority of the board voted to move forward to even get the bid, so I think the majority of the board has already spoken, or we wouldn't have the bids in front of us.
Anyone else?
Yes. Is there a cost to the current one that we have now? No cost at all. Yes.
Do we do maintenance on the current website?
Maybe it's in a sense of...
Do we allow anything on that, or?
No. We just maintain it in-house.
Yeah, it is, it's not the best website to try to navigate through.
Okay, Mr. Fox?
Who's, who's responsible to maintain the current website?
Current employees, as well as assistants from back there.
Back there?
Right.
We're paying a whole lot of money without that particular, I'm glad to see things going up to bid, but why can't they do the job they're being paid to do? If it's not user-friendly, paying somebody to do the job, create a user-friendly website, why is it not user-friendly, and where are we paying the money? How do we know? I'm a taxpayer too. How do I know that the new monies that we are going to spend by majority rule, how do we know we're going to be able to? Or is it just another waste of money?
Mr. Steer?
Back there is a networking provider, they're not the website designer. They make sure everything's working the way it's supposed to work as far as networking. They don't design the website, update the website. You need a web design for that, totally separate thing.
Mrs. Walsh?
I would make motion to approve the bid for school messenger, and you know, for $5,600.
Three seconds. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Extentions?
I have a question. I do have a question. Who's going to, what are they going to build this website to? Who are they going, who's going to tell them, this is the way we want the website to look?
It's a, basically, it's a committee that will determine, based on input, as to what they would like their website to look like. It would involve building administration, teachers, as well as parents. They actually meet with the web designer and say, this is what our vision is for a website, and the designer puts that together based on the software that they have.
Well, the designers from California, so I don't think they're going to be meeting with them.
I believe they have, they're also in the bid, talks about regional offices, so...
They will redevelop office, or?
I don't know if there's one in Hancher, I didn't find it in the bid.
That comments in this group?
Yeah.
Here, shall we move on?
Mr. Brown asked for these next two items to come on the agenda, so...
Mr. Brown, is Brian in addressing?
Uh, school buses, apparently Milton's using Wakefield buses again, when the board has already voted that we will, that buses will not be loaned out any longer, and Wakefield is not being reimbursed for that use.
Any response?
Is that recent, or?
Is this since our last meeting? They've been used again since we voted?
Well, it was voted before that also, that we would not loan the buses off. Apparently, you know, we buy buses almost every year. Milton doesn't buy buses, you know, like Wakefield does, so, I mean, why should we keep purchasing new buses every year so that we can have four spares, so that we can just loan them out to whoever? It was already previously voted by the board to stop that practice, but yet, once again, beyond, beyond the board vote, oh, just loan out Wakefield buses up, and we're not being compensated. We've been told that it costs $500 a day to rent a bus, so, I don't know, but Wakefield should be compensated for the use of the buses, for past use of the buses.
Any other comments?
I would request that if something like that was going on, then the board be provided with backup information and all of that, instead of someone just saying, oh, Wakefield's doing this, or Milton's doing this, you know? If you have a...
Yes, the superintendent's already said that Milton's been using Wakefield buses, so, yes.
Yes?
I think it's hard for Milton to understand that we had a conversation brought up, a couple of board members saw Wakefield buses being used in Milton. I guess it was a directive of the board, or a vote of the board before Michael was on, that Milton was not supposed to use Wakefield buses. If you, when you take on a position, or when you become a board member, you read through the last year of minutes, but even if you read through the last year of minutes, you may still miss a vote or a directive, and if it's not set policy, then it's hard for us to move forward, whether it's board or superintendent, to know that those things aren't okay. It doesn't come, you know, when you take a job and you take this position, once again, when it comes up, you deal with it. We're sorry that it happened again. He's already apologized, he already said that it wouldn't happen again, but yet, some board members feel it's important to kind of like, keep throwing it in people's faces. I think we handled it on a Wakefield level, Milton can handle it on a Milton level, and as long as Wakefield knows, and Michael knows now, other than giving you the information that you, that you did borrow a bus, that's what you need to know.
Yes, Mr. Superintendent? Just for some history for the board. The Wakefield Board, I believe it was in September of 2012, gave a directive that school buses will not cross Wakefield lines, and unfortunately, a Milton bus broke down the first day of school for the elementary run, and we grabbed the Wakefield bus to transport Milton Elementary students on the first day of school out of the need. That's where this issue arose.
Well, I personally witnessed that bus myself. I took a few snapshots, if anybody would like to see that. I think the issue is whether or not Milton would be reasonable in compensating the taxpayers of Wakefield for the use of that bus. The bus director was part of the program back in 2012. He knew what the director of the school board was. If we're to say, okay, well, it's a mistake, we don't need to even ask for compensation even though we love the school board, that's a personal preference.
I think it's hard for Milton to understand that we had a conversation brought up, a couple of board members saw Wakefield buses being used in Milton. I guess it was a directive of the board or a vote of a board before Michael was on that Milton was not supposed to use Wakefield buses. If you, when you take on a position or when you become a board member, you read through the last year of minutes. But even if you read through the last year of minutes, you may still miss a vote or a directive. And if it's not set policy, then it's hard for us to move forward, whether it's board or superintendent, to know that those things aren't okay. It doesn't come, you know, when you take a job and you take this position, once again, when it comes up, you deal with it. We're sorry that it happened again. He's already apologized. He already said that it wouldn't happen again. But yet, some board members feel it's important to kind of like, keep throwing it in people's faces. I think we handled it on a Wakefield level. Milton can handle it on a Milton level. And as long as Wakefield knows and Michael knows now, other than giving you the information that you, that you did borrow a bus, that's what you need to know.
Yes, Mr. Superintendent.
Just for some history for the board. The, the Wakefield Board, I believe it was in September of two thousand twelve, gave a directive that school buses will not cross Wakefield lines. And unfortunately, a Milton bus broke down the first day of school for the elementary run. And we grabbed the Wakefield bus to transport Milton Elementary students on the first day of school out of the need. That's where this issue arose.
Well, I personally witnessed that bus myself. I took a few snapshots, if anybody would like to see that. I think the issue is whether or not Milton would be reasonable and compensate the taxpayers of Wakefield for the use of that bus. The bus director was part of the program back in two thousand twelve. He knew what the director of the school board was. If, if we're to say, okay, well, it's a mistake. We don't need to even ask for compensation, you know, we love the school board. That's a personal preference. I myself feel as though the taxpayers of Wakefield deserve to be compensated, just as the taxpayers of Wakefield would pay compensation to have to rent a bus if the need arose. Again, we don't really run out of buses in Wakefield because we do have a regularly scheduled program replacing buses.
Yes?
When we had the meeting, and our bus coordinator was there, and we discussed the lending back to the buses last time. He said what they typically did was make sure the buses were returned with a full tank of gas. It was a gentleman's understanding. It's my understanding that the bus was borrowed so that the little kids can get to school and it was returned with a full tank of gas. At that point, we didn't discuss compensation. We said, okay, let's not let this happen again. I, they did what they were supposed to do. They filled the tank. At this point, I think that pick your battles. I don't think we need compensation for that happy day run or whatever it was to use the bus for.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Well, I, I would refute that they did what they were supposed to do. If they did what they were supposed to do, the bus would have never been loaned. If they did what they were supposed to do, there's no policy on what they're supposed to do. So it's not a fair statement to say what was done is what they were supposed to do.
In my opinion.
Oh, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Mr. Fong, you have a comment?
I have. I was gonna reflect, but Mr. Brown.
Do we have any more?
I have to believe that the majority or ninety-eight percent of the people in the town of Wakefield would certainly okay helping us out in a situation like that, just as Milton would have helped Wakefield out in a situation like that. First day of school, kids have to get to school. We appreciate your bus.
Any other discussion? Shall we move on? Uh huh. You have any comments? Well, the next one, Mr. Brown. R S A thirty-two eight, you wanna discuss that one?
Yes, this was, you know, brought forward because the superintendent says that Wakefield, the Wakefield Board doesn't have any right to, to take this issue on. So although they do and hopefully they will, but we had a situation where the superintendent cut a check and presented the check to Board at a, at a September second meeting.
Point of what? Does this have to be in non-public?
No.
No?
I'm asking for it to be in public, please.
Just checking.
So it's in the minutes, time and good research.
And there was money taken out of a line item of appropriation and spent on something that there was no line item of appropriation in direct violation of R S A thirty-two eight. So it would be my recommendation that the, the joint board needs to take, take some action on this because it's clearly in violation of state law, what was.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. One passing around right now for the full board is to have a copy of the R S A, R S A thirty-two colon eight, which is titled limitation on expenditures, so we have an opportunity to read that R S A.
Walsh.
Okay, Mr. Fong. So through the budget process, there was a line item for a trailer that the voters let a slave body vote upon approved. It was fifteen hundred dollar line item. As superintendent, with help of the majority of Wakefield School Board, zeroed that line item out and paid more than that line item to an employee of the Wakefield School District with additional funds. And they, and he did that without an approval of the school board, without even work being done. So here we have a situation where we're being told that as the chief financial officer of the school district is the authority to violate the law. It's specific in this law that you shall not disappropriate funds for any purpose other than what's been appropriated. You can't, zero all that line, not spend the money on what's been raised and appropriated for. You spend it on a different item that there is no appropriation for. And in the near future, the Wakefield School Board will, will be tasked with making a decision on whether they're gonna spend more tax dollars on, on a non-line, a non-line item. So in my opinion, we're either gonna willingly violate this R S A or we're not.
Mr. Chair.
You're right ahead, Mr. Turrisi.
So what I also passed around is R S A thirty-two colon three, which actually are the definitions of the municipal, it's hard to, municipality budget act. And if you read that definition of purpose, please take the time to read that. I don't have a copy of it. I'd love to read it. So if you look at the definition of purpose, it talks about a line on the budget form posted with the warrant. That budget form is your M S twenty-seven. Your M S twenty-seven states specifically the lines that are your functions, meaning that you can't spend from function to function without the authority of the board. However, superintendent can spend within the object codes within a function. Therefore, there was no violation of the law. If you read the definition of the purpose, I didn't violate that law. And again, it's another false accusation of me breaking a law.
Where, where, who waited to say that in the purpose?
As used in R S A thirty-two colon eight concerning the limitation on expenditures, a line on the budget form posted with the warrant or form submitted to the Department of Revenue Administration or an appropriation contained in a special warrant article shall be considered, considered a single purpose. An object line is not submitted on a budget form that goes with your operating budget. It's your M S twenty-seven that lays out your functions. So the board has the authority to spend monies or move monies from function to function and superintendent has the authority to spend within the object lines.
Can you show me where it says that? Because I'm not saying that. And I'm, I'm looking at the law. And the law states the governing, governing body, not the superintendent. Can you show me where it says the superintendent has that right?
The purpose here, your definition, you have your definition before all of the other R S As within those specific R S As that lay out definitions and specific terms. And within that definition, it talks about lines on the budget form, which is our functions. Therefore, by me spending money within an object line is well within my purview as my position.
Mrs. Walsh.
You know, you don't exactly know what the situation is Wakefield and we probably don't need to know, but it sounds like it's something like this. Let's say in our regular education line, we budgeting twenty-five thousand dollars on high school books. A year later, when it's time to bind, we need twenty-seven. Mr. Turrisi makes the decision to take it out of the elementary books line. He can do that. He does not have to come to the school board to do that because it's within that regular education line, within that function line. Is that what we're talking about? Pretty much.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a similar example, Mr. Chair? Let's say that you have monies in a replacement line for, or repair a replacement line for computers. All might be within the technology function. However, you find a computer that you feel that you can fix. However, you can't fix it, you have to purchase a new computer. Therefore, you spend the monies out of that line to purchase a new computer compared to repairing it. That's a decision that I can make.
Okay, Mr. Fong. So the purpose of the appropriation was to buy a trailer for, for custodial reason. There was no purpose delineated in the M S twenty-five or any other document that I've seen up to date. Maybe you can present it to me. That says the purpose is to repair a vehicle used by an employee of the school district. There's, what you've done is set a precedent that any employee of the school district may damage their vehicle, whether it's on a town property, school property or somewhere else. And without board approval, that employee can ask for a check to repair the damages and take the monies away from a specific purpose, a line item that was proved by the voters, and zero that line out, cut a check without anybody's knowledge and pay costs on a non-specified purpose in a budget. You, you'll need to show me, before I rest, you'll need to show me the purpose that covers an employee, an employee's accident. Employee at the wheel on town property, not even on school property. Show me that and I'll, and I'll settle that. Otherwise, I see it clear by option four.
Go ahead.
I think it's very evident right in front of you with the definitions that I've provided to the board as well as the, the R S A, that a purpose that's stated within a budget is the function. And a function is in your operations and maintenance function. And this was an employee that was utilizing their vehicle for maintenance reasons. Therefore, it falls within the function. Therefore, there is no, again, violation of the law on my part.
Okay, yes.
Can I ask why this we brought to the S A U rather than being dealt with in non? Was there a specific reason for you bringing it to the S A U? In many, well, what is the specific reason for you to bring it to the joint board rather than letting it be a Wakefield issue?
Because once again, the superintendent says Wakefield has no jurisdiction over this.
So you want to reprimand him, that's why you brought him to the joint board?
Well, this cannot be allowed to stand. I will go to the state with this because he cannot be allowed to do this single purpose. That is not, this is, right in, right in his purpose, it also says, R S A thirty-two ten. R S A thirty-two ten specifically states the governing body, not the superintendent. So this, no, this cannot be allowed to stand. You get, you're not, like, it's setting precedent. If that, we're coming up to a budget season, but why don't we just say, okay, here's a million dollars to run the S A U, super, Mr. Superintendent. You just spend it any way you so see fair. I don't think so. The school board and the budget committee. R S A thirty-two eleven clearly gives out the, how to go about taking money out of a line item appropriation and spending it on something that there is no, no line item of appropriation. So I totally disagree with the superintendent on that he hasn't broken the law again.
Any other comments? Mr. Fong?
Yes, then, Mr. Turrisi insisted on this being a, a joint board issue.
Yeah, that we wanted to thought.
And the reason why I asked for that to happen is because the original intent was for a reprimand. And that would happen at the joint board if there was any type of letter or reprimand. That's why it's here.
So what is the action other than making us aware of your feelings?
Well, I guess we would have to take that part of it into non-public, though. I mean, there's total, there's a clear violation of law. And Mr. Turrisi's got this, you know, his interpretation, but his interpretation isn't flying with me because it clearly doesn't say the superintendent has the authority. Doesn't say that anywhere on that.
Okay, Mrs. Walsh.
We appreciate you bringing the concern to us, but can we move on now?
I think we can. I think everybody is very, very confused.
I know you don't have comments again on the agenda, but will you allow me to make one?
Sure.
Okay. I wanna get this straight. The board gets the manifest, right? The checks are attached to the manifest. The board approves the manifest. If the majority of the board approves the manifest, then you've approved this check. If you didn't want this check to go out, you could have done something about it right then and there. So how did he violate any law?
Yeah. Well, there's a penalty, there's a penalty by, and that's a removal of office.
By you people?
Not, not us people. I, I did not vote for.
Yeah, it doesn't matter if you voted for it.
Oh, it does.
The majority of the board, the S L S, once the board votes, the majority speaks. Doesn't matter if you voted no. So the majority of the votes, board spoke. They approved the manifest, therefore they approved that check. So he didn't go out and give that check to Joe before you approved it. Oh, sorry. Anybody?
If I could, I'd like to make a comment.
Thank you.
So we move on or do we want to push up something more?
Well, I just, I would have to address the idea of being culpable for others' actions. And I guess the idea that a majority is going to allow all members to be prosecuted or subjected to prosecution under the law because of their acting. I don't agree with that. And that's, I think that's the most important part that this joint board has to consider. If there's a violation of law, you know, sit back and say, oh, well, we're all culpable. I, I don't wanna play party to that. And I don't wanna be held responsible for when a majority of a board decide, when, when a majority of a board decides to violate a law, if two members or one member doesn't agree, that member is not responsible for the other people's violation of the law. People will stand against that stuff.
Just one question, can you check this with counsel?
Uh, no, not really, but I don't understand a lot.
I would check with counsel, personally.
I, I wouldn't spend the taxpayers' money.
I just have a question. When this, this manifest came up and I saw the check and I knowingly signed that manifest, I don't understand why this wasn't, you guys saw it as well. Why didn't you question it the night the manifest was in front of you and the check was in front of you? Why did you wait to, to what? The next meeting or the meeting? I don't remember which meeting it was. I guess that's my question. If you guys felt that strongly, you probably should say, hey, wait a minute, guys. Mr. Turrisi, why are you sending this check out? Why do we, you know, I don't, I don't understand that.
Because the sent, the check was already sent out prior to the discussion at the school board. Yes, it was.
No, we signed it.
Okay, Mrs. Walsh.
This is a Wakefield issue.
This is a Wakefield issue.
Sorry, I have to go.
Can you move on? You going to non-public? We have a motion.
I'm gonna go.
Second?
I'll second.
Brown, yes?
Cogga.
Walsh, the eye?
Jaw eye. C R eye.
Jaw eye.
Jaw eye.
C N jaw.
C R eye.
I'll say. You all say it.
Your machines all warmed up?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Shump, you have a comment?
I mean, uh... I don't think that was a... That's someone else's opinion, but my opinion is that Democrats and Republicans can't even get along, so... People come to this meeting, they get different points and different views, and I have no problem listening to everybody. So I have a vote. If I don't like something, I'll vote no. If I like something, I'll vote yes.
Are you married?
Yes. I don't live at home.
That is a Democratic process.
Yes.
Discussion, debate.
You may not like it, but, uh...
The majority has a rule. Anybody else have comments? You want to go on?
Motion, or you're out?
I'll second.
Hold the table?